It's called a meeting for order, the pledge allegiance.
I don't know.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
May I have a moment of silence, please? Go call two. Council President Steerds.
Here.
Counselor Schneider.
Here.
Counselor Stickley.
Here.
Counselor Chamberlain.
Present.
Counselor Steerds.
Here.
Counselor Frye.
Here.
Thank you. Council has had the prior meetings minutes and we have a motion for approval.
I would make that a motion.
Second.
Counselor Stickley made the motion with Counselor Frye seconding. All in favor?
Aye.
And we have...
I think I didn't say nothing.
What's that?
Ask her out, she knew that was six to zero, maybe I didn't say nothing.
Actually, I did.
Taking on Trudy. For Trudy.
I'm so hard actually nervous too.
We have a visitor, council. Matt, come on up. Matt Gerro is here to talk to us about the tax credit.
Good afternoon. I'm here tonight to share with you that there's a company that has recently acquired the building located on 715 West Lynnfoot Street. Most folks that I know of talk about that being the German Village Building. So if you're not familiar with the address, it's the German Village Building. It's been sitting underutilized for the last seven or eight years or so. And this company located headquartered out of Mason, Michigan. It's called Clean Lights Recycling. And they intend to utilize that building for their seventh operation in the United States. Basically, what they're planning on doing is recycling airbags as well as other products out of that location. They plan on hiring at least 15 people within 36 months. And they have started the process of renovating the building here recently and hope to finish the renovations necessary rather soon. The company is a national business, small business. I believe they have around 50 employees throughout their six facilities. And they've been very good to work with. I think they'll be a nice fit in the Waseon community. And it's certainly taking a building that has been underutilized and putting it back to good use. So I anticipate they'll clean up the exterior of the building as well as the interior as they continue their work. What you have in front of you this evening is an application for the job creation tax credit program. I believe the city of Waseon established the program maybe about six, seven years ago. And this is the first application I have presented to you. I'm not sure if there were any prior...
No, this is the first.
Okay, so this is the first. And this is for a tax credit of 50% of the employee withholdings income tax on a local level. So essentially, your, the 15 employees will be paying a percent of their income and the tax credit would go back to the company. This is an incentive for them to choose the German Village site, which they have done. And the city administration and my office has been working with the company over the last two or three months or so to try to accomplish this. They had quite a few other communities that they were considering, but they really liked that building. And they have been in Waseon, looking around, talking to folks and such over the last few months as well. And I felt like they'd make a good fit into the community, too. So I'll be happy to entertain any questions you might have and leave it at that.
How long are they looking at, 50%?
I believe it'd be for a 10-year term.
10-year?
I could interject one small thing. As Matt mentioned, they are headquartered in Mason, Michigan. For those of you who aren't familiar with Mason, Mason is very similar to Waseon. They are the county seat of Ingham County, which Lansing is a part of. Unlike us in the larger city, in the county is Lansing, in the state capital. But Mason is the county seat, so... They're a little larger than we are, but not a lot.
So the employees get the income tax taken out, right? And the company gets 50% of that?
Correct.
Is that one?
Yeah, yeah.
So the more employees, benefits both of us?
Absolutely. You got it.
That'd be great to see that building put to use. Yeah, exactly.
I think it'll be great just seeing the building get taken care of and put back into working use again, too.
Agreed.
A little bit about the process, maybe Tom's better equipped to ask the question. But what we've got lined up for council tonight is a resolution authorizing the mayor to enter into the agreement for those terms with this company based on their application. It would be the next council meeting before we have to pass an ordinance that lesses the executed agreement. And then there was a component to the process that said something to do with review in Columbus of some type.
Oh, through ODSA.
Well, that's where I'll defer to Tom.
Yeah, I guess we were just noting that the Temple Agreement, which we had used and incorporated the language, requires that the Director of Development determine that Clean Lights is eligible? And I don't know whether that's something that you would be working with them on.
Yeah, my office would handle that.
Okay. I'm assuming that's just a, you know, procedural thing that's not a big issue. Yeah.
Just curious, Dennis, you and Matt, have you been to one of their other facilities?
I have not been to the operation.
I've not been to one of their facilities. However, I've done some extensive research, Googling it and looking at Street View to try to get a feeling for where their other locations are and what they look like. Some of their other locations are located in larger municipalities, metro areas, so they have fencing and so forth. So in the initial discussions with the CEO of the company, Tom Kimmel, he has inquired about zoning and fencing and that sort of thing. They do it for security purposes in some of their other locations. So they're debating about, will that be a necessary step here or not?
I guess my one concern was that the plastic recycling that we had out there...
These guys, I understand, harvest gold and other precious metals out of the workings from these car components.
So it's airbags, recycling, electronic components, actually televisions, lamps, things like that. So it's a pretty extensive list of items. However, they do not recycle paper, plastics, or for that matter, anything that would interfere with the work that Triangular Processing does, just located down the street.
Do you know the amount of property that went with that? Does it go clear back to the railroad track?
Yes, it does. There's just over 17 acres in total. And quite an extent... Essentially, there's another site for future development as well. They purchased the whole acreage.
The seller didn't want to split anyway?
Yes, I think the seller wanted to be rid of the whole property. There's a question as to what the long-term is for that second, the acreage, if that will be available for development or could be used in a different way.
The purpose of the emergency, just to get it moved along, I guess?
Expedited, so they have the ability to start the process of hiring employees.
So this, the way it reads is 2019 estimated completion date, but they still actually have to go through the process of making sure that they will be qualified as well on their...
Yeah, I anticipate they're going to start hiring folks sooner than 2019, likely over the next several months. And they would like to have their initial two people start sometime here very soon. They're working through some issues with utilities. And once that is resolved, then I think at the very least, two people will begin working there and then they'll grow from there.
Matt, just on a larger scope, the tax credit beneficial process, you think?
Yes.
Okay, all right.
To be real frank with you, the typical process of the local incentives, we have two that we can offer. One is a property tax incentive, the other is the income tax. Property tax comes into play on new construction. However, when they're acquiring a vacant building and there's no... They're going to do some changes to the roof and they're going to fix it up. However, that's not going to change the tax value. So we couldn't really apply a property tax. So having this available to us is instrumental in the process. And they were looking at other building options elsewhere. And I think this helped us in the process of achieving the result.
Any other questions? I think you answered.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks, Matt.
Okay, great. Committee reports. Looks like we really have any that we need to act on tonight. So we move on to our very limited department head reports.
And being very limited, we'll make it very limiting as well. Fourth of July, I think, went over very well. Not too many complaints. We did have to close the park a little bit earlier than what we expected because we had filled up. I think it was 9:36 when we put the last cars in. So hopefully, when we get all the paving done, get some lines put in there, we can get some more cars parked. But we got them in as many as we could and had no problems. I believe we were out of there by 11 o'clock, a little after 11:00. So it wasn't too bad. It didn't get run over and nobody got hurt. We had a few problems, but most of them were minor. Also, just a reminder, tomorrow is the Coffee at the City at Bigby. That's from 8:00 to 9:00. Now, there was a question asked on why Bigby. Basically, this was set up by the chamber. Bigby came to the chamber asking to do this. This was a four-time event throughout the year, every three months. And then we move ours around, the Coffee at the Cop, to the different areas throughout the city. So once school starts back up again, we will start doing our Coffee with the Cop again. And we have hit Red Ramblers, Marks, Upper Cross, McDonald's. You know, I'm missing somebody. And I apologize, but there was another one as well, so...
Yeah, because I thought you guys were moving those around.
Yeah, we do move them around. But this was set up between Bigby and the chamber, so we felt that it was a worthwhile benefit and we are working on it. And I think that's all I have, unless someone has any questions.
I think you guys did a very good job out there. It was a good show. Rick's not going to say anything, but it was a good show. Dennis?
Okay, let's see if I remember how to do this. First big announcement is we have a fall cleanup scheduled. So if you want to take down some dates, it will run from September 17th through September 22nd, which is also Chili Cook-Off Day, I believe. During the weekdays, it'll be open from 8:00 in the morning till 8:00 in the evening, as we have done in the past. And that last day on Saturday, it'll be open from 9:00 to 4:00.
So drop your junk off and go eat chili?
Yes. Yes, or get it done during the week so that you get all data to play at the Chili Club. We have been working with the Fulton County Health Center in regards to their expansion project. The city has agreed to partner with them. And there's some water line rerouting that needs to be done. The existing water line loop is going to be very close to the south edge of their new addition and at a depth that would absolutely flood the first floor if it would ever break before we could get it shut off. So hospitals bought all the materials, they paid for the engineering, and we'll do the installation as our part. Those plans and specifications have just been approved by Ohio EPA. About a week ago, we received that. So work is going to begin on that, weather permitting, probably sometime in the next week. This goes to a question that Shane had asked me previously that I was checking into. That's probably going to push our Lynnfoot Street sidewalk project back till after, sometime after school starts, but we'll do our best to get that done yet this year.
This line that's going in on the south end, you said?
Yes, we'll actually go in the...
Southwest?
The clear...
Or southeast?
We're going to take it clear to the southern part of their property, actually south of the house that they own, south of the hospital, and do the loop around that way and then tie into the existing line up near the southeast corner of the addition.
So then we have breaks back there or something, breaks or something during the years, we just go in and... Because there are lines back there?
Yes, yes, those are airlines. The existing line will get abandoned when the new connections make, the one that's in jeopardy. And we have to do that in order to... So their project, we have to jump on it because their project is time-dependent on getting the paving and parking lots and stuff all done yet this construction season. The BioSalage project out at the water reclamation plant is progressing, but very slowly. The contractor's currently digging in a line from the south storage digester that'll go clear up to the north side of the existing office and garage building where the new... What's the right term? The press will be mounted. And there's just all kinds of stuff to dig around, so it's very slow digging, very slow going, but they are progressing. The pool in general is doing very good and is super well attended. The Snack Shack is making some money for us. Time will tell if it makes enough money for us to come close to breaking even, but it's good to see. And I tried to call this afternoon and missed the folks at Astro, but I wanted to try to give you an update on when they projected the second slide to be here. There are still some issues with the pool project, as we talked about it committee of the whole. We'll work through those with Ruth Rosebruck. And some of the issues that Ruth Rosebruck have to fix aren't going to be able to be done until after the pool closes this fall. So there's time. And actually, as far as growing grass is concerned or making changes with that, it might be a better time of year for that as well. So we will work through that. That's all I have, other than I'll chime back in later on when we do executive session.
Any questions pertaining to Dennis's report?
I got one question. Did the county run the pump station from the airport or was that part of the city or did that go or don't you know?
No, that was all county. We had to agree to accept the sewage.
Sewage?
Yes, for a price.
So did that go back to 108 or where did that end up at, you know?
Yeah, as you know, their former package plant, which processed the sewage near the western edge of the runway. Discharged north of there into that little ditch creek. Instead, that is still the collection point where they put the pump station in place of it. But then it turns around and pumps it clear back south to County Road J and along the south side of County Road J to 108. We have a manhole there, it's the north terminus of our sewer system there.
I just wondered, nobody would tell me exactly where it went. Nobody knew.
Oh, call them.
You didn't ask.
I asked the wrong people. I asked the county commissioners and they said, "I don't know, we just paid for it."
Well, then you should have given them some heck if they didn't know what the man ZI was doing.
Some days you don't want to do too much.
I understand.
Besides the additional slide, any breaking news on our three-compartment sink for hotdogs?
We think we may have found a four-compartment sink, which also handles not only the dishwashing requirements, but the hand washing requirements. There again, we're not going to dive into that until after they close in the fall because we'd be taking the Snack Shack out of commission to try to make it fit and work, so hopefully we can do better for next year.
Okay, Jamie is gone, so move on to town.
I had transmitted late last week the promised proposed revisions to the Slow Moving Vehicle statute under Chapter 3377 for the codified ordinances, the revision to the Drug Paraphernalia section of Criminal Code, and a section dealing with restrictions and use at the municipal reservoir. Sent that to the Safety and Code Committee, which entertained those changes earlier this afternoon. And they should have, I think, next council meeting recommendation for council. I think all three of those were approved, so you'll get a chance to see those next time. And we've already gone over, I guess, nothing really more needs to be said about Resolution 2018-21, which is the resolution which authorizes the mayor to sign the tax credit agreement with Clean Lights. And then just to reemphasize it, next week, there'll be an ordinance approving that agreement. The way the revised code reads, it basically says that the legislature has to pass an ordinance allowing the tax credit. But before it can pass the ordinance, the entities have to enter into an agreement. So that's why it's sort of cumbersome process. But that, the Resolution 2018-21, would authorize the mayor to sign that agreement, which we drafted and you have in your packet. I guess that's all I have for this evening, I guess, for my public service announcement. I would just like to say that the North Star frisbee golf thing at the park is really a great thing. My kids personally have been going crazy playing up there this week or this year with their kids and with their friends this summer. So I just want to say thanks to North Star for doing that. We were out.
Worthington.
I'm sorry, Worthington, got the wrong...
It's Worthington. That was good, too.
So thank you.
Did they have a tournament this weekend?
This weekend? I thought it's coming up this weekend. Yeah.
I went out with my youngest son on Wednesday and I felt like I was at the golf course because I had a group behind me and a group in front of me and I felt like we were slowing them down. It was so busy.
They said the place where you started at, the grass...
Starting to wear, yeah, yeah.
I always see someone playing in it.
Yeah, they are, they are. And they're probably going to really not like the fact that the Bible school is there this week. Yeah, they got it all roped off, so it's gonna...
In the beginning, I didn't understand how intricate this was. I thought maybe we could sell frisbees at the pool and, you know, if somebody threw one in the creek or fence. And no, they have all different sized frisbees behind it, like the curried little bag.
Weights, sizes, everything, that's a big deal. And I've heard that they really enjoy our park because it's very competitive with the trees and the hills and the terrain and...
The shade.
Shade, yeah, they really like it. We are...
I'm glad to see that side of the creek being utilizable.
Yes, yes.
Exactly. Yeah, exactly.
A guy that'll play this out does this for eleven, lays them out and puts on big tournaments.
Tournaments, yeah. They're very impressed with it.
We had talked about expanding it sometime, like to...
Right now, the 18 is back and forth. Like they go back the one way and then they come back the other way. And they would like to see it go bigger, but they realize going across is going to be, could go in the pool, they could go, you know, into the play area, but it is, it's a good course.
Quick question for Dennis, if you don't mind me backing up. School board ever get back a hold of anybody down there?
I haven't heard anything from them.
They had their meeting, they had their meeting and they were to get it back with us.
I mean, it was in the paper, but if they haven't got back...
Yeah, they just had their meeting.
They get a call from anybody?
Yeah.
That's on the papers, I was...
They had their meeting, it was in the paper, it must be true, they had their meeting.
Got to be just in the paper, got to be true.
Okay, let's move on to legislation. Ordinance 2018-5, ordinance providing for the issuance and sale of $700,000 of notes in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of improving the municipal water work system of acquiring construction and installing a water line and two municipal water treatment plant by constructing an additional treatment building and lagoon, acquiring additional treatment tanks, a high-service pump, and additional piping and making other necessary improvements, and declaring an emergency. This is the Napoleon Waterline and add-ons.
Well, yeah, lots of stuff that you mentioned in the title. Essentially, rather than issuing bonds and going through that expense years ago, prior to Jamie's tenure, all of those debts were combined into one note issuance. And at its largest, it was 3.5, 3.6 million, I think. So we're way on the backside of it, it's down to $700,000.
That's our debt.
Yes, yeah. Yeah, and like I said, rather than going through bond council and doing a bond issue for a set number of years, you can issue notes every year, as long as you get it paid off before 20, I think it is.
So it might actually always...
We probably could have closed two if we wanted to have them add-ons.
Just before you get them retired.
Just before.
I appreciate you explaining that because I was going to ask Jamie if she'd give us the dummy version of the 12 pages she gave us to read.
Okay, well, I hope it didn't sound like a dummy, but that's what it is.
I'll make a motion to place ordinance 2018-5 on emergency.
Second.
Council President Steerds made a motion with Counselor Chamberlain seconding. Any discussion? Counselor President Jeff Steerds?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Steerds?
Yes.
Counselor Frye?
Yes.
Six a's, no n's. Motion carries.
Final reading.
Second.
Counselor Frye made a motion with Counselor Steerds seconding to place on final reading. Counselor Frye?
Yes.
Counselor Steerds?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor President Steerds?
Yes.
Six a's, no n's. Resolution 2018-20 authorizing the mayor to enter into an agreement with Archive Social Incorporated for Social Media Records Management and declaring an emergency.
Second.
Counselor Schneider made the motion with Counselor Stickley seconding. Any discussion? Counsel President Jeff Steerds?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Stickley?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Steerds?
Yes.
Counselor Frye?
Yes.
Six a's, no n's. Motion carries.
Let's hurry up and archive those Facebook posts, final passage.
Second.
Counselor Chamberlain made the motion with Counselor Frye seconding. Counselor Frye?
Yes.
Counselor Steerds?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Stigley?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor President, Steers?
Yes.
Six A's, no N's. Motion carries.
Resolution 2018-21, resolution authorizing the mayor to enter in a local job creation tax credit agreement with Clean Lights Recycling Incorporated and declaring an emergency.
I would make that motion. Sorry.
Counselor Stigley made the motion with Counselor President, Steers seconding. Any discussion? Counselor President, Steers?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Stigley?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Steers?
Yes.
Counselor Fry?
Yes.
Six A's, no N's. Motion carries.
Get it. Final reading.
Second.
Counselor Schneider made the motion with Counselor Stigley seconding. Counselor President, Steers?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor Stigley?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Steers?
Yes.
Six A's, no N's.
Hang in there, Trudy.
I'm trying.
Would it be easier if you just said Counsel Freddie?
Counsel Freddie, did I say that?
No.
You did.
Again, the last one's here, though.
I'll forget you. Third reading, Resolution 2018-19, authorizing the mayor to enter in an agreement with Tamco Capital Corporation for a new phone system. It's almost here.
I would make that motion. I'll second it.
Counselor Stigley made the motion with Counselor Steers seconding. Any discussion? Counselor Fry?
Yes.
Counselor Steers?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Stigley?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor President, Steers?
Yes.
Six A's, no N's. Motion carries.
Under new business, we have the liquor permit for S&amp;G Stores LLC, 1200 North Shupa Avenue, the Valero, Waseon, Ohio 43567. It's a C2 wine and mixed beverages in sealed containers for carryout. This is where we talked at our committee of the whole that if you do not act, it will go through. Any discussion on this?
Do you know who it is?
I think it was a stop-and-go, is what we thought it was.
Oh, is it? Okay. Will they be selling gas to you?
I think so, yeah. Was it a gas station as well?
I didn't know they could still use the tanks.
I'm not sure. I don't think they brought the tanks up.
I don't think so.
I didn't know sometimes.
I think the tanks are still down. I didn't see them bringing them up.
Yeah, I know, but sometimes they don't, I don't think they allowed you to, they said so.
That's something we can check on.
They do require them to pull them.
Yeah, I just wonder.
We can check on that, we should.
It doesn't matter, I'm just curious.
So when you do this, is that beer also, do you know, or?
Yes.
Yeah.
That little beer, anything, nothing?
Beer or wine?
No hard.
Hard liquor.
Valero already had the...
Yes.
Yeah.
It'd be nice to see someone in there.
No action on that, then we'll... Anything else for new business? Okay, then could we have a motion to pay the bills?
I'd make a motion to pay the bills.
I'll second that motion.
Counselor Chamberlain made the motion with Counselor Stigley seconding to pay the bills. Counselor Fry?
Yes.
Counselor Steers?
Yes.
Counselor Chamberlain?
Yes.
Counselor Stigley?
Yes.
Counselor Schneider?
Yes.
Counselor President, Steers?
Yes.
Six A's, no N's. Motion carries.
I need a motion to enter into an executive session to consider the purchase of property, and two, to consider the dismissal, discipline, and demotion of a public employee.
I would make that motion. I'll second it.
Counselor Stigley made the motion with Counselor Schneider seconding.